Good afternoon. We are going to begin our meeting of the Board of Education. I'd like to welcome everyone here present. To start off, I would like to ask the board's indulgence in terms of, because we do have an emergency session coming up too, to start off with the student presentation. So first of all, if you would stand for the presentation of the colors by the JRTC color guard from Kearney High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twice? Okay, we're going to move first to the student presentation. We have some students here who have said the pledge allegiance for the second time today. So they are very loyal to their country. Today, our student presentation is from Bay Park Elementary School. It is a STEAM presentation. Bay Park is in the Claremont Cluster. And so who do we have here from the school to introduce this group? Is the principal, we have the principal right here. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Leslie Barnes, the very proud principal at Bay Park Elementary School, and we've been participating in a STEAM pilot, and it has just breathed a big breath of fresh air into our science program, and we're so excited to share some projects with you. So I have some very excited kindergartners and first grade students to take over, so let's do our thing.
Okay, they can come up on the stage and we can kind of move around.
Good evening and welcome. We are kindergartners and first graders from Bay Park Elementary, and we are eager to tell you about our experience with STEAM. Hi, my name is Vaughn, and I'm in first grade. I love STEAM because it's so fascinating and you get to explore different topics. For example, we learned about creating apps and coding. Our class made an app on healthy eating habits. If you make a good choice on the app, it will direct you to a healthy recipe you can try with your family. In our coding program, it taught me how to work out problems step by step, and I had to learn how to persevere when it didn't work and start over. But when I placed all the blocks correctly and clicked run, I felt super successful. Right now, we're learning about how animals' structure helped them to survive. I got to mimic the sticky hands of a gecko. They are able to climb walls and trees where predators cannot reach them and reach food where others can't. Our class loves STEAM because you get to create, dream big, and let your imagination run wild.
Greetings. My name is Kai. I'm in first grade. Do you want to know why I love STEAM? I love STEAM for so many reasons. For example, we get to explore and build with Legos. We made plants out of Legos, and we worked hard to show the parts of the plant and how it would survive. We also have been able to code on programs. With coding, I had to learn from my mistakes and keep trying in order for it to work. Now, we're learning about animals and how they survive. In class, I was able to engineer my own pair of rabbit ears in order to empathize with a rabbit. Rabbits have highly sensitive ears, and they are able to listen for their prey and also get away from their predators. Thank you for letting me share why I love STEAM so much.
Hi, my name is Kalen, and I'm a kindergartner. I've loved learning about animals from the books we read for STEAM. Orcas eat sharks, fish, and whales. I know this because they are carnivores. They eat other animals. I also learned that cheetahs eat antelope, wildebeest, and zebras because they are carnivores too. These animals live in the savanna in Africa with the cheetah. Our class noticed a pattern between the orcas and cheetahs. They both hunt in groups. Male cheetahs hunt in groups of two, and orcas hunt in groups when they have big prey like whales.
Hi, I am Kennedy. I am in first grade. I love STEAM because I love science. We have been learning all about animals. We discovered that animals' body structures all have function. I loved learning all about dolphins. A dolphin uses its blowhole to breathe. It has blubber to stay warm, and it uses its fins to quickly swim away from predators.
Hello, my name is Lincoln, and I am in kindergarten. I engineered a shade stretcher to reduce the warming effects of the sun. I made a model of myself with UV beads. I tested my first structure made with foil, black paper, and cardboard. It didn't work very well because there was a big hole for my person to get in. My model, my mini-model changed colors. I changed my structure to be covered on all sides, and that time it worked. I knew it worked because the UV beads on my mini-model did not change colors. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean. I'm in kindergarten. I'm learning about animals and their habitat. I built a savanna habitat for cheetahs out of Legos. My habitat had nonliving and nonliving things that my cheetah would need to survive. I built a dirt mound to show the cheetah can see her prey, and there is a cheetah eating a zebra. A cheetah can get a drink at the watering hole. I put two Legos together to build a big bush that cheetahs can hide behind it when she is stalking her prey. There is tall grass that provides shelter for the cubs. The shade. Provide shade. Drinking during the day when it is hot. I had a lot of fun building with my friends. They constructed different animals, and I learned about the living and nonliving things that helped their animals survive.
Hi, my name is Jace, and I am in first grade. I love technology because I learned how to code a field ball. I coded a field ball to make it move and change colors. I also learned how to code on my computer during STEAM. My favorite coding project was Dance Party. I loved the shark character. I was able to code my character's music and dance moves.
Hi, my name is Chelsea, and I'm in first grade. We have read many great books that go with our STEAM lesson. One of the books that I really enjoyed was Seagull Sid and the Naughty Things His Seagulls Did. The seagulls felt that they were on the beach first, and then the people came, and they were playing loud music and leaving trash. The seagulls were upset. In STEAM, we are learning how trash can damage and affect animals and their chance for survival. We have learned that it is important to throw away and properly cut our trash so the animals are not hurt or worse die.
Hello, my name is Maya Hofreider, and I am in first grade. My class and I love STEAM. With each STEAM project, we got to plan, talk, create, design, demonstrate teamwork, imagine, investigate, problem solve, wonder, improve, and share. To begin, with each lesson, we observe phenomena. Phenomena are all around us. They are things that happen naturally and make us wonder about the world. For example, a plant growing or a seagull eating a plastic bag. We have done some amazing things this year, like plant our own mystery seeds. I plan to someday create a beautiful garden now that I know how they survive. We also learned how to persevere through a problem with a chant. It is "pause, breathe, try again." It really helps. If I had to describe STEAM in one word, I would say it is interesting. It's interesting because we get to discover so many new things. As you can tell from all my Bay Park friends, we love STEAM. Thank you. For an example of the book, here's a little page of it.
Okay, at this point, I would like to request an interruption to our normal meeting of the Board of Education for an emergency meeting to discuss the coronavirus. Is there a motion by a board member to call for the emergency meeting?
I'll move the agenda for the emergency meeting.
And it's seconded by Dr. McQuarrie. Okay, all in favor of having this emergency session, please vote. Okay, and that passes 5-0. So now we will commence with the emergency meeting, which is to consider a resolution granting emergency powers to the superintendent regarding the situation of the coronavirus. And just as the state of California and the county of San Diego have declared emergency declarations, we are going to do this also. The resolution has just been written for this emergency meeting and is available at the tables at the front and back of the auditorium. And basically, what this resolution will do is authorize the superintendent and/or her designee to take any and all actions necessary to ensure the continuation of public education and the health and safety of the students at our district sites, including but not limited to the relocation of students and staff, provision of daily student transportation, provision of alternative educational program options, provision of leave of absence to employees with pay due to quarantine or recently returning from Level 3 countries, or sick from COVID-19, or illnesses with similar symptoms, or cohabitants of any individuals without any impact to their benefit time directing staff to serve as disaster service workers and/or make alterations, repairs, or improvements to school property. So as you can see, this resolution is designed to have this district prepared for when and if we need to make significant changes in how we deliver education to our students in relation to the coronavirus, which we will obviously do in consultation with the county Department of Health, and also the consultation of our district physician, Dr. Taris. And we will be operating on this scientific information to make the decisions. This particular resolution is for the board to authorize the superintendent to take any and all steps necessary to ensure the safety of our students as well as their continued education.
Board President Evans, I'd like to make a motion in the matter of the intent to declare emergency conditions exists, and the state and the school district offices adopt the resolution.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Beiser and seconded by Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Any comments by board members at this point? Mr. Barrera.
Yeah, just a couple. I think the, so first of all, are we all working off of this?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I think Dr. Evans correctly corrected the resolution. So in Section 3, it should say authorize the superintendent and/or her designee.
Right.
But I think my question is about number 2, and I'm not clear why we need the second section. What is in the second section that's not fully contained in the third section?
You're saying the one that is numbered number 2?
Number 2. So the number 2 says, "By unanimous vote pursuant to Section 20113 of the Public Contract Code and subject to approval by the San Diego County Superintendent of Schools, authorizes the execution of contracts without advertising or inviting bids, and notwithstanding Section 20114, authorizes the flexibility of, I assume, maintenance and operations, notwithstanding Section 2114, to respond to the emergency conditions at district sites." I'm not particularly comfortable with the idea of giving, and it's nothing about the superintendent, but allowing the superintendent to enter into contracts without advertising or inviting bids. And my read of Section 3 is that it fully authorizes the superintendent to take any and all actions necessary, so I'm not sure what the purpose is of Section 2. And I don't know if the superintendent or somebody was...
Superintendent or Ms. Donovan, do you want to comment on that?
Section 2 is a specific finding under Section 20113, and if you give me a minute, I'll let you know if it can come out.
Okay.
Trustee Barrera, if I might respond. When I read through that, I was thinking about some situations where there isn't a lot of time to go through a bidding process and have staff review, award points, and then just determine which contract to approve to get in and take care of the situation immediately. And so I, you know, while I don't believe that this would be, you know, the process for every single contract under the state of emergency, I do believe that there may be several situations where it necessitates immediate action to get it done so that we can protect the lives of our students and our staff.
I can have Dr. Ottinger give an example, but one example would be if we needed extraordinary cleaning equipment or something that we needed on a short-term basis very quickly. And Dr. Ottinger might be able to give more reason why we put that there would be only for extraordinary means or measures.
Thank you. Absolutely right, what Mr. Beiser said and Ms. Martin said. The intent here is to prepare ourselves for things that we cannot completely imagine what may be necessary. So I think the cleaning example is a good example. It is to ensure that we have, the superintendent has the ability, if extraordinary measures are needed, and the timing is such that there does not happen to be a publicly scheduled Board of Education meeting where we would normally run the entire process if we need to hire a specific or buy a piece of equipment or something that is needed as a result of the situation. It allows that type of authority. It is certainly not to circumvent normal processes and procedures, and that is not our intent, other than with cases that we cannot, at this point, imagine what lengths of a potential piece of equipment or contract or an extraordinary service that we cannot provide, that I can't tell you right now what exactly that may be. If I could, Andrea O'Hara and our incredible contracts team would be working on that right now.
And I think Andre was going to help us explain why we need Section 2 when we already have Section 3. And I suppose my other question about Section 2 is, how long is this provision in effect? You know, so we don't, and we can't identify the length of the state of emergency, but I guess I just worry a little bit about...
Make sure it expires.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the code requires simply that an emergency circumstance exists. It would be probably the cleanest if we at least made reference in one to say for purposes of, among other things, Section 20113 of the Public Contract Code, and we could take out 2 in its entirety.
Okay, so just...
What was the amendment again?
Number 1 would read, determines that the circumstances described in the resolution herein constitute an emergency condition for purposes of, including but not limited to, Section 20113 of the Public Contract Code.
Okay, so do the movers accept that amendment? Okay, so we'll just amend that.
Are you planning to tell us the expiration date?
Well, I just have a question about that. Would that allow you to do what you need to do, given any potential eventuality?
I believe that gives us a reasonable ability to make sure that we are responsive.
Right, what do you mean by reasonable ability? Let's say we absolutely had to have a school cleaned tomorrow, would you be able to go out and take care of business to provide for a safe school with that amendment?
I'm actually going to defer to counsel on that piece.
You could actually probably do that without bidding in either case. It probably wouldn't raise the bid threshold limit, but, so it wouldn't matter, but yes, you could. And to Richard's earlier, Trustee Barrera's earlier point, the circumstances of emergency have to continue to exist for us to rely upon it. If challenged, we would have to show that at the time that we initiated a contract without a bid, that these emergency circumstances continue to exist. So it would not be indefinite.
Okay, okay.
And then just to reiterate what Trustee Barrera said, in Section 3, the superintendent can take any and all actions necessary to ensure the continuation of education and the health and safety of the students.
Dr. Evans, I just wanted to say, if we knew all the parameters now, we would need this action, period.
Right.
So we definitely don't want to tie our hands before we even get started.
Right, so at this point, we are clearly defining that there is an emergency, and this would allow us to take all the actions necessary. Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. One in Item 2, and it may have already been covered in Item 3. Item 2 is introduced by a phrase that says, "By unanimous vote pursuant." What is unanimous vote referring to? Unanimous vote tonight or...
Well, I'll defer to our counsel on Page 2. Item 2, it refers to unanimous vote.
We're taking Section 2 out in its entirety, but it just suggests that there was a unanimous vote for that particular finding.
Okay.
So that's not an issue. In Item 3, and we talk about student transportation and educational programs, one of the issues that comes up frequently with the closing of schools is how students who, how do students get fed? Many students rely on the school lunch for their meal for the day, and I'm wondering, is that included somewhere in here? We're going to take care of students in somewhere during the closure?
Wide scope for that purpose.
Right, I mean, I'm assuming that when it says any and all actions necessary for both public education and health and safety of the students.
That's part of the health and safety.
Transportation is one, and obviously having our students fed whether school is open or not also falls within that.
Green.
Agree, okay.
Thank you. I want to also clarify that with taking Item 2 out, this has to be a unanimous vote in order to invoke Public Contract Code 20113.
Okay, that has to be our unanimous vote.
Right.
Okay, seeing no further comments, please vote on this important resolution. This is giving the superintendent the authority to move forward on this. We're not getting into the specifics right now. And that passes 5-0.
I just wanted to thank the board for taking this extraordinary action, for the extraordinary situation that we're in. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. That will conclude the special emergency session, and now we will go back to our regular meeting of the Board of Education. I would like, we've already seen the student presentation, but I would like a motion to adopt the rest of the agenda with Section I, the superintendent's consent agenda, to be considered next.
So moved?
Moved simultaneously by two board members. Moved in alphabetical order. Please vote on the agenda, and that passes 5-0.
I'll move Section I, the superintendent's consent agenda, with, I believe... I'll move Section I, the superintendent's consent agenda, with, I believe, Item I-12 being pulled because we have a speaker. Any...
Okay. Does any board member want to pull an item other than that? And the speaker is only on Item 12.
Yes.
So you have moved all the items except 12. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a second. Okay, please vote on the consent agenda. Right now, I'm going to just make a few comments about the rules in the meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Education. It's a business meeting that's conducted in public. So the members of the board will carry out the business, but will not engage in direct dialogue with members of the audience. There are opportunities for a member of the audience to speak, both on agenda and non-agenda items. And if you want to do that, you must submit a public testimony request. And you can see the iPads at the back of the auditorium and in the lobby, unless you've already submitted a request, in which case your name should be on the blue sheet located at those same points. And if you want to address the board on any items, you must do it. For an agenda item, you must turn in the slip before that agenda item is presented so that we will know that you're going to speak on it. And then non-agenda testimony will be heard at the end of the meeting. So the requests are timestamped, so be sure to do this in a timely manner. And then the speakers will be called when that item comes up. There is a time limit on the time, depending on how many speakers are there, and we will inform you of that. When you come up, there will be a green light when you speak. There's one, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and then when it's a red light, please finish your comments. At this point, we are going to move on to Item D1. Are there any reportable actions from closed session?
Yes, the board voted unanimously in closed session to release all of our temporary teachers and to issued March 15 notices to all central office certificated administrators and vice principals.
Okay, thank you. And Superintendent Martin, could you let us know the administrative assignments?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Evans. The Vice Principal for Mann Middle School, Augustus Fiaszungga; Vice Principal for Pacific Beach Middle School, Jordan Sobel; Vice Principal for San Diego High School, Jason Navarro; Principal at Joyner Elementary School, Kara Kujampa; Principal for Marshall Elementary School, Stacy Donahue; Principal Rowan Elementary School, Nicole Weber.
Thank you very much. And now we're going to go to our ASB student representatives. And today, we have Jenny Seensuk. How do you pronounce your last name? Seensuk, okay, very good. Jenny Seensuk, who's the ASB president at Morse High School. And then we will hear after her from Ayla Kumasa, who is the ASB president at Point Loma, and the president of the Council of ASB Presidents. So starting off with Jenny, if you could just let us know what's going on at your school.
Hello, my name is Jenny Seensuk. I'm the ASB president at Morse High School. So both boys and girls basketball teams made it to playoffs. The girls soccer team also made it to playoffs as well. For Black History Month, our honors African-American literature class hosted a Renaissance Fair to celebrate the diverse culture that we have on campus. Students in the class recited poems, presented artwork, and performed dance recitals. Morse is also having our 14th Annual Week of Consciousness coming up in late March. The topic for this year's is sexual assault. To wrap up our Week of Consciousness rally, we get the community involved by having a peace rally, which is a small parade around our community. All of our profits that are fundraised throughout the week also goes towards Rachel's House for abused women. Our Sadie Hawkins Dance is coming up on April 17, and the ASB class has been working extensively to plan. We have recently had a crayon and art supplies drive to collect items to donate to a federal elementary school. We have also had a food drive, feminine hygiene drive, blanket drive, and blood drives. Our next blood drive is April 22. The campus is also undergoing an extensive amount of construction due to the whole site Mars modernization project. That is all.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. At Morse High School. And now Ayla.
Okay. So first to report on the Council of ASB Presidents. We started looking at the district ASB administrative procedure because we felt that it was somewhat out of date. So we're looking at that and comparing best practices between our schools that we can maybe update that procedure. And we are also continuing our discussion with the topics from our ASB Winter Workshop, which was ASB Finances and Fundraising, School Spirit, and Student Advertising. So we're continuing to see how we can implement what we learned from that workshop into our campuses. And a lot of our schools are going through ASB elections right now. So we've been talking about that and trying to see how we can kind of get the word out about ASB applications and how you can join the class so that as many students have that opportunity as possible. It's great when we can get as much diversity as possible so that we can make sure that we're hearing voices from all different kinds of students and social groups on campus in order to try and help diversify that, I guess, if that makes any sense. And then at Point Loma, today, our Place for Peace Club held a class period assemblies for all students, which was an opportunity to integrate students from all grades and social groups on campus. And we talked about some really powerful topics of identity and culture and diversity on campus in our small groups, and then we came together as a school. So I thought that was a really great and productive day. So hopefully, we're going to continue with more stuff like that on campus because we've just been kind of starting working with our Place for Peace Club. And also, our girls' basketball team claims the Division III CIF title. So that's been really big on campus, at least recently, and we've been really supporting them. So we're super excited about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so both of you, if you have any comments to make when we're conducting our meeting, please just raise your hand and let us know, and we'll give you a chance to give your opinion. At this point, we're going to go to the superintendent's information report.
No report tonight.
Okay, no report tonight. And board members, let's start with Dr. McQuarrie.
No report tonight, but I do want to acknowledge our students from Bay Park and their demonstration of the importance of making school meaningful, showing how they're doing outdoor education as well as using Legos. We started the Lego partnership several years ago, and it's an opportunity for our students who are familiar with toys to bring those toys into the school and the learning environment. And they can transform their learning from toys into tools, which helps them model their world and their experiences, and it allows them to develop conversation. So it's been a terrific program, and I think the Bay Park students demonstrated it quite well.
And they demonstrate a very high level of reading, in my opinion, for kindergarten and first grade. And it was also nice to see the first graders helping kindergartners if they get stuck on a word. So that's good. Mr. Barrera?
No report.
Okay. And Mr. Beiser?
Yep.
And Dr. Whitehurst Payne? Yes.
I have a lot of things to talk about and a lot of pictures.
It's your opportunity.
But I won't talk about them all. But I mean, yesterday at SARA, we had an event on anti-vaping from the students themselves. They put it together. It was a wonderful event. Supervisor Nathan Fletcher came and worked with us, with students. Choir concert was excellent on Saturday night. I invite everyone to attend that next year. I think it's getting better each year. On Saturday, Superintendent and the councilwoman and I were all at the event for Bell and for children with disabilities. They have their own baseball field. We'll post pictures of all these things. We attended Reverend George Walker Smith's funeral on Friday, and we got a picture with Dr. Bertha Pendleton, who was the first female superintendent in this district. Attended an African-American mobile museum, Carolyn Russell. We had talked about that. Knox had a wonderful event that I'm not sure if we talked about. Mann had a wonderful African-American program. And I think I'll end with that, but we'll get some pictures up on the website of all these things.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Is there a motion on the board consent agenda?
So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded?
Yes, you do have...
Well, let's see which ones we have speakers on.
On F3 and F5.
F3 and F5. Okay. So all of the items except F3 and F5?
So moved.
Okay. And seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. So let's vote on those. And Item F3 is a resolution to the matter of recognizing March 2020 as California Arts Education Month, being brought forward by Dr. Whitehurst Payne and Dr. McQuarrie.
Yes, I have Russ Burling. He's here.
A speaker by the name of Russ Burling. Who would that be?
Thank you, trustee superintendent, for bringing this resolution forward. As you might imagine, I'm speaking for this resolution as the Visual Performing Arts Director. I want to concur with Dr. Whitehurst Payne that last Saturday was an incredible choir concert, honor choir concert at Lincoln High School. It gets better every year. The quality of the voices, the expression that we saw there was just phenomenal. And it's indicative of what's going on in our district around the arts. Ever since, in this room, you all passed the Strategic Arts Education Plan back in October of 2016, we have been on a real tear. And we've been expanding and promoting arts education in the district. We've been messaging how important it is. We have formed a VAPA Foundation and getting more funds into the hands of teachers. And it's really exciting to see what's going on. But because this is California Arts Education Month, we have a lot that's going on to showcase. And so I just want to mention that you have probably seen up in the hallway the art that is going up. And the opening for the art show, district art show, is this coming Wednesday, the 18th. 4:30 to 6:30 is a time when all the parents are invited to come. They can come see it anytime that it's up, but that's when the big opening happens. And it's really cool to start at TK and make your way all the way around and come back and see what our seniors are doing. It's an amazing transformation because we know that the arts transform lives. We have the debut honor concert, which is our elementary through sixth-grade students at Point Loma Nazarene University Band and Orchestra on the 19th. The high school concert is on the 22nd in Symphony Hall, that Sunday afternoon, 3 o'clock. That concert, close your eyes and you think you're listening to the San Diego Symphony, not high school students. It's amazing. And we are going to recognize some of our amazing teachers and administrators and students at the San Diego Downtown Library on the 25th, 6:30 PM, for the Spotlight Innovation Awards. Lastly, support the VAPA Foundation Come to Beyond Brilliance Spotlight on Dynamic Young Artists, which will be April 18 at the Conrad in La Jolla. So we have a lot going on. It's just scratching the surface of everything that's going on throughout the district at our sites in support of arts education.
Thank you, Mr. Burling. Dr. Whitehurst Payne and McQuarrie, do you want to make any comments?
Well, I just, yesterday I met with the arts education staff at IMC. And I'm just proud of what we're trying to do. We've got some momentum going here. The VAPA Foundation, I think I talked about that at one point. We do need folks to come participate in this, donate some monies from your own pockets to help us with extra activities for our children because that's what it's about. The small grants that we give to teachers to do different and unique things. That's what we do with some of the monies. And so I'm expecting all of you here to participate and write some checks yourselves to help support our children. And anybody else in the audience who'd like to support us? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McQuarrie?
So with this resolution, we're encouraging our school and community leaders to continue to broaden and strengthen their commitment to provide art education in every school. And it applauds the efforts and dedications of our art educators and our advocates in San Diego and throughout California. So we celebrate the arts that include the full gambit, dance, music, theater, literature, design, various visual arts, and media arts. We know that a well-rounded education program stimulates creative thinking, critical thinking, problem-solving skills, imagination, creativity, discipline, and it creates alternative ways to communicate. So we want to, we're celebrating the arts, we're encouraging the arts, and we want to expand and strengthen the arts in our schools in San Diego.
Yes.
We're celebrating today both Women's History Month and the arts. And I must mention Anne Marie Haney because she's a woman, and she's big on the arts. And so we recognize her today. I told her I would do that.
Very good. A very good recognition of her as we're doing this. Okay, at this point, please vote on the resolution on Arts Month. And that passes 5-0. And now we will move to Item F5, which is the resolution supportive actions that will educate families and encourage a complete 2020 census count. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Joanne Fields.
Joanne Fields. Oh, here she is.
It's been a while. Today, I am representing the Morris Cluster. I'm Joanne Fields, the co-chair there. I'm also government and public relations director for the Asian Pacific Islander Initiative. So we have been working with our principals, our community members, our students to become advocates for a complete and accurate count in Census 2020. We have posters, we have flyers, we have T-shirts, we have toolkits for our teachers who will hopefully share it as a government lesson. So it's a part of the civic engagement that the students can learn on why we need to participate. What's in it for the school district is our free lunch program as we prepare our seniors to apply for college and maybe the FAFSA, our federal aid for student assistance, FAFSA. We also have our Head Start, our preschool programs, so many programs that are federally funded that we don't think that Census has a role in it. One thing I also want to include is that there is a game changer that we have technology on our side this time. And we have what is called a questionnaire assistance center. So while I might not speak the 13 languages that are provided at a questionnaire assistance center, we can set up in our parent centers what's called a QAC for short, or a questionnaire assistance kiosk, where people can self-report, whether it's staff, whether it's parents, or if you allow community members on campus at the center that they can fill out there. We don't want technology to be a divider, but to be inclusive so that, again, that we can use the resources in language and at our convenience. So in 48 hours, you can expect the Census invitation to come into the mail between March 12 and March 20. And we hope that once received, that we complete the form right away. Well, Census Day is April 1. We want to be proactive because after that, you'll get two, three reminders, and then you're going to get that knock on the door. And that's what people are accustomed to. But if you fill out the form, there is no knock, no bother. Nine questions is all we're talking about. Nine questions that will prepare us for the next 10 years. We need to plan for the next 10 years. So our kindergartners that were here earlier, we're going to be planning for elementary school and junior high. And for our seniors and high school students, we're planning for workforce and for college. So again, it is very important. I came to advocate. If we need flyers, I will leave it with the office or distribution. You don't even have to pay for printing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Any comments by board members about the importance of the census? Dr. McQuarrie?
Yeah, this census is extremely important. It happens every 10 years, and so much of our funding depends on it, including funding for students here at schools. And our parents and community members need to know that this is a, it's an accounting of how many we have. It's not an accountability of who they are, how or why they're here. This is about how many people do we have living here now who, and that's, and so it's very, very, very safe, and we want to make sure our community actively engage in the census, support the engages, and participate and return that. I'd also take, want to take time to acknowledge Joanne Nguyen, who is... I'd also take, want to take time to acknowledge Joanne Nguyen, who is our coordinator, within our contact with our 2020 Census, who's helped, is our partnership specialist, who has helped us coordinate this effort and has met with a number of our cluster groups and met with a number of community groups and worked with our staff to create this, help us create this resolution, support this action.
I just want to say that this is really critical, especially for Richard and my communities. We just have to do it. And the easiest way is to just check it off now, get it done, put it in the mail, as she said, send it back. Because we absolutely must count everyone. And just FYI, children, babies are people too, so we want them counted too. They will be adults probably shortly, so let's just be sure to do it. And tell your neighbor, tell your friend, make parties if you need to, to say today, we're going to sit down and fill out these forms together as a group. Send it in. I mean, everybody's doing your own, but question number one, this is the answer, what, just work through it. We have to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Barrera.
Yeah, I would just add, it's, this resolution is incredibly important because as a school district, we have maybe the most important role in our society in encouraging families to fill out the census. And one of the reasons for that is we have time in our schools when we talk to our students to educate students about how important this is, to also clarify for students that issues, for instance, like this question of citizenship are not part of what's going to appear on the census. We know that there has been an intentional and cynical effort on the part of the federal government to intimidate families in our community so that they are not counted. And so educating and empowering our students so that they can go back to their families and to their neighborhoods and be really the lead educators to let people know how important it is that we are counted, to dispel, you know, some rumors that some people intentionally try to propagate in the community, and to know that their efforts will, as Joanne said, make an incredible difference, not only now, but in the future of some of the young students that we saw today. So our effort to educate our own students will yield major benefits.
Okay, and I see it says resolve the San Unified School District will support local efforts and plans of action, and it's committed to working in partnership with local civic business and community leaders. I guess I have one questions for the superintendent about this, which is, obviously, our students need to be educated about this in terms from kindergarten to 12th grade about government and civic responsibility, not just in social studies classes. So I'm wondering if there's any specific way that teachers in the coming weeks can be providing this information to students about the importance of participating in the census? Because we're passing this resolution, but I'm not so sure that every teacher in the district is going to be aware of it in the classroom, what we're doing here at this meeting.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. When you pass resolutions, we share that information with the school staff, different resolutions that have come forward. For example, the one around, I think it was Prop 13, we let principals know that this was something the board passed so we can make sure people know when you pass something like this, but also gather the resources of the people that are more aware, less aware, and make that available to all the teachers in the district so they understand the priority that goes with this. And any teaching or curriculum that's aligned to our core curriculum, they'll be able to integrate in an appropriate way.
Good. Very good. Okay, please vote on this resolution. And that passes 5-0. Okay, now we're moving on to item G1, which the 2020 California School Boards Association is the Region 17 Delegate Assembly. We are to have the opportunity to vote on nine representatives out of about 15 or 16 that are here on this list. I don't know if any board members have specific recommendations they want to make, since we have up to nine. Dr. McQuarrie.
So in the past, what we've done is to take a look, and we've had input from the board members who are current delegates to have recommendations for how to proceed. In the past, we've tended to go with the incumbents and then to take a look at those who are left, and then appoint a balanced slate. And looking, looking at the list of, what do we have, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. So 14, 14 names, and we have nine positions. Seven of them are incumbents who have performed their duties, I think, very effectively and would recommend that we continue with those. Looking at the non-incumbents, we tend to try to do a balanced slate and make sure that we have our smaller districts, north and south, represented. We do have a candidate from San Isidro, Humberto, whom I would recommend. And then we have the counterpart in San Marcos, Stacy Carlson. So I would recommend the seven plus the incumbents, plus Humberto and Stacy.
Second. Okay, his move there, we approve the seven incumbents, plus the candidates from San Marcos and San Isidro. Any further, any comments by board members? If not, please vote, and that will be our vote to the region. Okay, and that passes 5-0. We are now moving on to item H, District Operations, and this is for the fiscal year 2019-20, Second Interim Financial Report in compliance with Education Code Section 42130 and Resolution in Matter of Intent to Declare Qualified Certification at Second Interim and Balance District Budgets for Fiscal Years 1920, 2021, and 2022. So first we'll have a presentation by staff on this. And thank you, student members, for moving at this point so the staff can be closer to us. And then after the staff presentation, we will hear from public speakers and then board comments.
Thank you, President Evans. The second interim report that you're going to be hearing tonight represents the financial update of the district as of January 31st and the projections that go through June 30th. As you know, all districts are required to provide an update no later than March 15th each year. That's what the second interim represents across the state. All districts are required to do this. And the changes include any updates that we may have received from the governor in January and the January governor's budget proposal. The staff recommendation tonight includes a change to self-declare the district into qualified certification with the intent that we will self-certify positive by June 30th. And this highlights the need for continued advocacy at the local, but more likely the state level. We need to continue to advocate because the January's governor's, January governor's proposal showed some things that we had some concerns about, and we're going to continue to advocate. For example, the change in the COLA and the relief that we've seen previously on STIRS and PERS and some other advocacy that was, that's related to other issues that are of great importance to this board and our district. We'd like to see a change by the May revise, but unless and until that change, we're recommending that we self-certify qualified as we continue to do our advocacy in Sacramento. So tonight's presentation will lay out the facts as they currently are presented to us with the January proposal.
Thank you, Superintendent Martin. That is a superb summary. Good evening, President Evans, Vice President Barrera, members of the board. This evening, Ms. Thede and I are presenting, as the superintendent said, the second interim As always.
As always, the clicker is a little slow.
We will start with the wheel. Perhaps.
Try pointing at that.
All right. You see here where we are, situating you on the timeline as we track for the remainder of the fiscal year. Tonight's report, as mentioned, is strictly based on the latest state and county guidance, along with the governor's January budget outlook. Now that we actually have the specifics in the trailer bill of the January proposal, we are going to lift up part of that proposed budget that really deserves some attention. I want to thank our communications department and government relations for really helping us get to the bottom of some of these numbers. Later, I will discuss more as to the staff recommendation to move our budget status to qualified. Truly, it has much to do with the data that you see on this slide. What we're seeing here is that 42% of the available Prop 98 funds have been directed away from local control. And it is this redirection of funding, or redirection away from local authority, local problem solving, that is giving us significant pause and creates the platform that the superintendent mentioned in terms of continued advocacy statewide regarding the importance and to stay the course with local decision-making. This is a, this is a key aspect of our advocacy and our conversation this evening. Moving to the revenues, as you review, here's an accounting of our major revenues, and I'd like to highlight, first, the loss of revenue from declining enrollment, which overall, with our unduplicated counts, is over $14 million. Along with, I'd really like to highlight, the decreased COLA that was mentioned earlier, or the cost of living adjustment of 2.29. As noted in the bottom, this was from a statewide projection at budget adoption and first interim of 3%. So that 3% was the number in the guidance that we were given to use. That, while that percentage might seem insignificant, that draw from 3% to 2.29 constitutes for us over $6 million in lost revenue that was reasonably expected based on the guidance. So with that, we will move to our expenses. This slide has been a recurring reminder of the way that our expenses have been increasing in some major categories. The utilities, but the faucet, is really the electricity, water, fuel, waste removal and related services that are generally about $25 million. And as been much discussed, the reason that number is not ballooning several, several million dollars more is our excellent work and our taxpayer-supported bonds and our solar and our FPC and all of the work that is happening to keep that at a reasonable level, which is around $25 million a year. You'll see the step in column with the dollar bills. That is increased funding to our hard-working and dedicated staff who increase on that step in column every single year. That constitutes about $10 million in increase for us. There'll be another slide on the pension, which is a recurring conversation. Our pension costs, just our employer share, is $12 million. Our special education is increasing about $7 million, and then our health care is also increasing roughly $10 million. So this is just a lift up of our most significant expenses. Oftentimes, it's discussed about the pension. This just gives you a graphic, you can drill into the specifics of the year-over-year in our charts, or really just to pull back and really help with our conversations around if we, if we roll back to 2013, 2014, what those costs were, what the percentages were, and then where we sit today, especially with tracking for, tracking for CalPERS being close to a quarter of the cost being situated here in our general fund. So, and, as just as a reminder here, as of January, we saw no added relief from the enacted state budget in June. Now, certainly, there was discussion in the January, really harkening back to credit from the prior, from the prior budget where they made adjustments. But to be clear, in the current governor's proposal, there is no additional relief for the pension, so add that to our advocacy platform. And taking a look at, many of the expenses that are highlighted here have been previously mentioned. This chart here provides our MYP, our multi-year projection, for our major expenditures. And the increased expenses, now again, we're talking about our increased expenses, many have been listed or discussed already, along with our lost revenues, specifically with the COLA and decreasing enrollment. And we add in the layer of the redistribution of the available Prop 98 funds. All of those factors together is why we see here for the 2021, an adjusted shortfall of projecting 84, 82, I'm sorry, 84.2 million for 2021 and 106 million, 106.8 for the 21-22 year. So when you think about all those factors with declining enrollment, increased expenses, and then also really that, that Prop 98, which is truly the lifeblood of, as Mr. Barrera mentioned earlier, really the most important work in this state, and to be redirecting, so adding up all of those pieces, we end up with this financial shortfall, which moves us to, as always, this board balances the budget. And so as we look at a roll-up of our solutions to ensure the balanced budget, I'm going to focus in on the $11.3 million in revenues that we as a district must count on in terms of the May revise. So I've spoken, and this really rolls back from our conversations in January about this, these funds that need to be directed to the local control. We are really here because of that redistribution. Those funds right now are trending towards one-time, they're trending towards special projects, they're trending towards competitive grants. And I'm really thrilled that Ms. Thede is here with me because if you'll remember to our January conversation when we talked about the first look at the budget before, we had trailer bill, before we could confirm our suspicions, Ms. Thede spent a lot of time talking about one example, which is teacher retention. Every single person agrees with teacher retention. That is the right thing to focus on for kids in this state. That is the right thing to focus. And this board, and this superintendent, and this team has been focused on teacher retention. We have excellent metrics, yet the state is taking an overall perspective to solve a local, a local challenge that we are resolving on our own. And they're going to do it, they're proposing to do it at the state level with taking hundreds of million dollars out of what we would be receiving to solve the teacher retention piece that we are already working on successfully, and go ahead and make it a different process leveraged by the state. And we don't agree with that. We agree that the local control is, we are solving it, and those funds should follow us. So with that, it really is this approach that I've just mentioned that is giving us pause. And so where do we go, where do we go from here? As usual, lots of factors that could shift, hopefully, in terms of our budget prior to the first day of the new fiscal year in July. There's still time for legislators to adjust the budget, and we are hoping through our advocacy that we see this advocacy reflected in the May revise, and then furthermore, in the adopted enacted budget. At this point, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Thede to discuss the relevant PKS, and then I will be back to, we will be back to request your vote on the staff recommendation on the budget.
Thank you. There are two corrections for this slide that I'm going to verbally share, and then the board action officer will correct them after the board meeting. So the first correction is on the left-hand side. There are 135 full-time equivalent listed in the PKS, not 173. And the line that is the fourth from the bottom that says special education, early childhood should be stricken. And I apologize to the board and the community, and a corrected version again will be posted this, following the meeting by the board action officer. I also sent an email to all of the early childhood special education teachers this afternoon explaining that information, and I have provided that information also to the teachers' union as well. So again, I apologize for the incorrect information on the slide. However, it will be corrected for the public record this evening. I would also like to very clearly and emphatically state that there are no layoffs for any employee who holds a special education credential. There, that is, there are zero. There are zero, there are none. No special education layoffs. There has been a lot of information put out there that we are doing that. We are not, we will not. It's not up for vote tonight. It is not part of the PKS. It won't come back after tonight, because March 15th is the statutory deadline for all certificated layoffs. So after my clarifying, what I would like to remind the board and the audience is that since 2017, 18, the district has utilized a targeted approach to future budget reductions, and as opposed to across-the-board cuts through tools like significant cuts. For that reason, the reductions that we present here tonight are very limited and specific. They are a combination of declining enrollment and less children. So when we take a look at what is being asked today, is the statutes require that we identify particular kinds of services and the number and types of services that will no longer be listed, what has been leaned down to in this year? Although there are 135 FTEs on the PKS, there will only be 55 notices issued to employees. Options for staff, the procedures require the most senior employees to be offered positions first. However, in our district, what we want to do this year is something different than what we've done before. As Greg talked about, retention is important to us. The work that people provide is significant, and the contributions that they provide are real and meaningful. And therefore, what we're doing this year is providing continued opportunities for employees via transfer and reassignment. We are also providing certificated career retraining and/or reassignment. For instance, I've spoken to the board and in the public about programs and partnerships that we have for ECE teachers who want to enter into internship programs, which are paid classes, paid, I'm sorry, paid opportunities for them to attend school and have a full-time contract with the district. And then we will also be partnering with hosted career fairs or other employment opportunities with some of our partners if some of the options that we have for individuals may not be something that people are interested in at this time. Some of these are all subject to bargaining. And so tonight, we ask the board to approve the resolution to reduce or eliminate certain certificated services for the 2021 school year pursuant to Education Code 44949, 44955, and Article 19 of the SDA collective negotiation contract as presented.
Which brings us to the second board action. Again, just to remind, we still must use the latest official guidance from the state in terms of the second interim, which is the January proposal. And again, after significant discussion, the staff is bringing forward a recommendation to self-certify as qualified with the intent of returning to a positive self-certification in 90 days after the May revise. This recommendation is not due to wild spending. It's not due to any form of responsibility. It is the result of potential impacts from what we are, staff are considering removing that local decision-making with those funds in Prop 98 demonstrated in the current proposed budget. At this point, we will pause for board questions.
At this point, we'll have public speakers, and then we will go. Is there a motion on this item so we can proceed with discussion later? Moved by Trustee Winters Payne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Barrera. Okay, and now we will go to public speakers. How many total speakers do we have?
There are 23 speakers.
23 speakers on this item. We usually have 10 on each side, however, we have more on one side as opposed to support. So in order to give everybody a chance to speak and going beyond the 10 minutes, I'm going to allow each person to speak for one minute. So 60 seconds is not very long, so please edit your comments and get to the point so we can hear from all the speakers rather than from just a few speakers. So Ms. Stoltz, will you call the first few to come forward?
Yes, Francine Maxwell, Emily Saft, Georgine, Georgianne, excuse me, Gedney, Erin Gretenberger, Mary O'Shea, and Stephen Ryan.
Okay, you can speak in any order of the ones that were just called up. You have one minute, so when the buzzer sounds very quickly, please just finish your sentence so the next person can speak. Thank you.
Francine Maxwell, PowerPoint page eight. You spent $233 million on special ed for the past three months you reported to the district. Due process has exceeded $1 million. The lack of, that you're paying our disability students is just amazing. You've had to pay millions to parents and teachers at will. There are special ed teachers in the district-wide whose caseload is over the contract limit are being paid prorated money every single month. When will the district hold supervisors accountable for this mismanagement? Qualified certification for 90 days. Let me see, shortfall, 84 million, 2020 to 2021, 106 million, 2021 to 2022. I noticed that the resolution said her designate. With Martin flying back and forth to Sacramento, who's actually running the district? Who's actually misappropriating all the funding that's not being given to our disability students? Our teachers are not being supported. Due process exceeded $1 million. This should be absurd. There is no way that we're going to have 55 people to be bumped. Least senior teachers, the reality is 123 people will be out of a job.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Gretenberger. I'm a member of the least restrictive environment committee. I'm a member of many committees, but why I am here today is the impact of the 25 layoffs, proposed layoffs, whatever, that impacts the early childhood special ed and early childhood. What I've got to say is I have attended these committees, and all of a sudden, they stopped? Our committee stopped, and this big change in early childhood was not even part of a committee decision? We are on that committee. Whatever plan, I don't know if you got it, because we never got it. We don't know what early childhood special ed is doing. And then we get Cindy Martin. I sat here last year, and I said, please, just give us one thing. You will never see me again. I am so ready to retire. Give up one classroom. You didn't do it, here I am again. But this program planning that the early childhood special ed is trying to do is disastrous. I am just, and it's just going backwards. I could, as a committee member of the least restrictive environment with district leadership, show me the plan. Here's the one that came out today, backpedaling. Please, as the Bay Park kid said, stop, pause, breathe, and try again.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Saft, and I'm a member of the special education, sorry, I'm a special education teacher, and I'm a member of the continuum committee that was established this year in order to collaborate with special education leadership to develop a three-year plan that was to transform the early childhood program. The first three months we met, we were bogged down brainstorming solutions for this year's current school year, because changes that happened this year were implemented inappropriately and not with good planning. Then we met to discuss recommendations for next year, and within only six months, the district is proposing these significant changes way too quickly. They took partial recommendations and modified them to fit their agenda, and then claimed that they collaborated with us, which is not true. Stop this from changing what's moving forward needs to stop. We need to work together to create a carefully thought-out program. Please think first.
The early childhood special education teachers will be the first to tell you that the system we have in place is not perfect. But what we do have is a continuum of services that is more comprehensive than anything currently offered to K-12 students. And unlike the district's proposed plan, it's available at schools near our children's homes. We were blindsided during last week's Zoom conference when we were presented with PowerPoint slides outlining our big opportunity. This opportunity actually reduces access to Gen Ed peers for many of our students, takes students out of their neighborhood schools, increases class sizes, and provides fewer options for students from early childhood educated professionals. The district has said that our three- and four-year-old students, including those with IEPs, will be supported by expert learning staff, and there will be a continuum of service available at selected sites. But the new proposal has two options, a Gen Ed class with 24 students or a separate class with eight to 12 students based on their age level. And what is the TK4 separate going to look like? We were initially told they would be with the mod severe students, and that could be a three-year-old with a fifth grader. The neighborhood schools, you can see right here, there's whole areas that we don't have classes for three-year-olds. They removed them, and this is really important.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary O'Shea, and I would like to speak to you as a parent. At this moment, I'm also a district employee, but I would like to speak right now as a parent, and I'd just like to express my appreciation for our principal, who worked at our site for 23 years. And my daughter is a 12-year-old who is bilingual and speaks languages much better than I do, even though I have a doctorate degree myself. She truly puts me to shame, and that's because Longfellow has done a very good job educating the children to not only learn languages, but to think. And I'm extremely impressed with the programs there, and I'm just saddened that we don't have a lot of answers, and I'll leave it at that right now, but I will let you know that that is one school that's truly achieving in this district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. I'm Stephen Ryan. First, I want to say both my children are beneficiaries of early childhood special education. Both are thriving in Gen Ed now. Both were diagnosed with learning disabilities. There's genuine concern that if we do shrink the ECSE program, our children at the earliest age will have to be bused and moved from schools. There's empirical evidence showing that children who start off in one school and continue on with classmates have a more successful transition to the busing. It could be very dangerous. Studies have shown 74% of children with autism spectrum disorder can escape their restraints with another 20% showing aggressive behavior in a moving vehicle. So that will have to lead to a lot of one-on-one aides on the bus, which, you know, a lot of the evidence we're seeing is pointing to a lot of increased costs, a lot of hidden costs, and a lot of extra risk. And I just hope that that is taken into the decision calculus with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being very concise in the next ones.
Yes, Tom Fordron, Denise Fordron, Chrissy McComish, Cynthia Marquez, Angelie Suero, Jill Pham, and Refugio Martinez.
Go ahead and speak in any order.
I'd like to say thank you for having us here. I am an early childhood special education teacher in a separate classroom. I think my biggest concern here is the level of miscommunication that has been given. We, over the past two weeks, my colleagues and I have been going through an incredible amount of stress trying to figure out what the actual plan is for the past, I mean, it was 1:32 PM today, where you got received an email actually confirming whether it's actually going to be special education cuts or not. I stood in this same room with Ms. Thede here present, telling us that they didn't actually have clear answers as to whether credentialing, actually, credential teachers that are able to teach a TK4 classroom were actually going to be staffed. At this point, it seems incredibly unclear what's actually happening, and with all of my power, I refuse and I oppose this measure.
Hi. My name's Christine McComish. This is my son, David. He is currently a student in the ECSE program. He was evaluated and accepted into the program in January of 2019. At that time, he fell into the developmental category of a one-year-old. He's been in the program for about a year and a half, and he has made significant strides that would not be possible in a neurotypical standard preschool. This program doesn't need to be fixed. It's already working. We're here to support that. Because of the strides that he's made, David's going to need less speech therapy. He's going to need less time with a one-on-one aide. He's going to be less of a disruption for his peers, demand less time of his teacher's attention, benefiting all the children in the classroom. The last thing I want to say is that we don't get a second opportunity at early intervention. It is a finite and a fleeting window, and it can have an exponential effect and impact on our kids' lives. And to radically alter this program will have a human cost, and that cost is our kids.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Fordron. I'm a parent of an autistic child, and I'm here to tell you how vital the early childhood special education program is for children with disabilities. My daughter was three when she was diagnosed with autism. The first thing we did was read everything about autism, and every piece of literature all stated the same thing. Early services like early special education, the better the long-term outcome. Her teacher, who has 22 years' experience, helped our daughter blossom in ways that would not have happened without him and the early childhood special education program. Her challenges are unique to her as each child with special needs. It takes specially trained teachers and aides to support our children, and at this critical time in their development, by removing the early childhood special education program, San Diego Unified is making a child's life, which is more complicated than most people understand, that much more challenging. Children deserve a special, children with special needs deserve a classroom that is designed to enhance their social and educational development. They deserve the right to have teachers who have specialized training. They deserve the right to have parents a part of the process that impact their well-being, development, and educational. I leave you here tonight with one thing. You have parents here. We're the ones that are on the forefront with these children. This program is not broken. Please don't break it for us.
Thank you.
I'm reading this letter on behalf of my mom, who couldn't be here tonight for health reasons. I am a former special education teacher for San Diego Unified and the grandmother of a child with autism. I find it incomprehensible that you plan to close the doors of 43 early childhood special education classes and disregard your dedicated gifted ECSE teachers, some with more than 20 years in special ed with the district. Our special needs children require strategic early intervention and teachers with in-depth knowledge of how to identify and overcome special needs challenges. I believe you are significantly undervaluing the great talent and resources of your ECSE program. You have a host of classrooms that have, over the years, been customized and in many ways individualized by your teachers to provide the best possible setting and environment to support our children with learning challenges and disabilities. I've seen firsthand how these teachers and classrooms are transforming children, engaging them to learn among their unique challenges. Volunteering for a year, one day a week, in my granddaughter's special ed preschool, I watched her advance and grow through the support and direction of a highly skilled ECSE teacher with more than two decades of experience in this field. This teacher took my grandchild from not being able to enter the classroom for two weeks to being part of a group of amazing children that worked and played together as a team, which hopefully you recognize is highly unusual for a four-year-old child with autism.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ms. Jill from Hawthorne Elementary, and I'm here to present my concerns about how the changes proposed to the ECE and ECSE departments may negatively impact children with special needs. And I'm speaking tonight as a parent and an ECSE educator. Having a child with special needs can be an isolating experience which is fraught with uncertainties, and one glimmer of hope for families has been ECSE teachers. ECSE has provided an environment where parents feel supported and close to their neighborhood schools. Early childhood teachers are often the first personal contact for many parents to learn about how the district will support children and families throughout the entire education. We focus on the whole family, not just the child, and this first relationship is integral to establishing trust between the key stakeholders, you guys, the teachers, the parents, and the children. And I implore you, as our elected officials, before you make a decision, to learn more about these proposed changes by the district leadership, to ensure that these changes are based on sound research, best practice, and they include input from all stakeholders. These changes will infect the most vulnerable children in our community. And as the board members, you're the voice of our children, so you have, please, please, give them an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Okay, the next speakers?
Yes. Yes, Sabrina Hanlon, Ginny Hefley, Keisha Borden, Frida Ferguson, Christina Gallegos, and John Sorenson.
I was a special educator for 38 years, and I'm concerned about plans to removing special ed preschools and indiscriminately blending special needs children within general ed classrooms. I believe in mainstreaming, but let's not forget that the word individual in IEP, equal doesn't necessarily mean the same. From experience, not everybody does well in mainstreaming. There are currently not enough spots in the public preschools for students with IEPs, and they are not being saved for those who are becoming IEP-eligible in the middle of the school year. My granddaughter's IEP stated that she needed, along with a general ed preschool, a push-in and pull-out speech and language services. This placement included a 60-minute bus trip for a three-hour public preschool program. This gets me emotional. How is this appropriate, reasonable, or at least restrictive for a three-year-old? My special needs three-year-old has severe communication issues. I'm strapped in there with no adult for communication, no assistance. It's unreasonable, unsafe, inappropriate, and traumatic, even for me.
Thank you.
My name is Christina Gallegos, and I am here to express my concern and professional opinion on how this budget approval will negatively impact early childhood education and early childhood special education. I am an ECSE teacher. Less than two weeks ago, teachers received news about these changes, not from the board, not from HR, and not from program managers, but from principals telling them that they had been accessed and their classes would be closed. Since then, several questions have been raised at two teleconference meetings. For examples, will four-year-olds in general education classrooms receive education from properly credentialed teachers? Will students under five with disabilities and IEPs receive services from properly credentialed education specialists? What exact credential regulations or research supports this move? No answers. And in an attempt to stop teachers from speaking tonight, vague responses and answers were sent to teachers this afternoon. I can only assume this poorly communicated program change is being pushed through quickly in an attempt to force parents to enroll their children in a program that works for no one. Stop this move. And once again, as the children said, stop, pause, breathe, try again.
Keisha Borden, SDEA president. I'm here for the ECE teachers and the ECSE teachers. These ECE layoffs are harmful and completely unnecessary. Now, we've been down this road before. Last year, you recalled these teachers. And this year, the district was supposed to come up with a plan to place these teachers in the Expanding Preschools for All program. We haven't seen that happen. The same process that happened last year seems to be happening again. Decisions are being made without stakeholder input. On an almost weekly basis, I work with the district on addressing class size overages impacting TK through third classes. Adding these most fragile young students to that system is simply not good for kids. As far as the ECSE program, these changes are not well thought out. Basic questions are still not being answered. Details about this plan have not been clear. The program works, and to blow this up makes no sense. Listen to your stakeholders, talk to your stakeholders, listen to the community before you make these harmful changes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm John Sorenson, and I, my four-year-old son, has benefited greatly from the Early Childhood Education Program at Kumaii Elementary. And there has been such a lack of clarity and communication around what would happen to him next year. We don't know what type of setting he would exactly be in. We don't know if that would be a full day or a half day. Would he have access to peers? Or would that change? Because currently, he has meaningful friendships and interaction with peers at his school and in his neighborhood where he lives. If this decision moves forward, this is not something that we would sign off on his IEP, and we would pursue litigation on this as necessary. And I would look to all of you to say, look, as a society, and as a city, and as a board of education, I think something that we should pride ourselves on is taking care of the least of these and those most vulnerable who this impacts. So if we can't do that, then who are we and what are we doing?
Appreciate it.
I'm Jeannie Hefley. I'm at Washington Elementary. I was lumped in with this group. I kind of am related, but not. They're proposing to move kindergarten TK to Washington Elementary, basically, I mean, to Colonel Solomon preschool, where the freeway is literally where that door is. There's no barrier wall. The flight path flies directly over the school with only a 500-foot clearance. Where the planes land down, it's only 1,200 square feet. And all these particulates are coming down. There's no amount of fixing the building that can fix this situation. And the reason all of this is being proposed is because my principal wants to fill the space so a charter school doesn't come in. Our students are not pawns, and their health matters just as much as if they were any other school. We have a low, our socioeconomic is 100% free lunch. We're about 70% minority. And these fine micro particles can't be filtered out because they're so, 30% smaller than a hair, that they're absorbed into the bloodstream. And these little guys, four and five-year-olds, they breathe so fast that their lungs take in more of this, and there's just a whole host of illnesses. It's not an opinion, it's fact. And we need to stick up for these kids that have no voice.
Thank you.
Yes, we have Gabriella Martin, Lauren Mansera, Miroslava Artiaga, and Kimberly Newton.
My name is Lauren Mansera. I'm actually a San Diego native. I actually grew up in this system with special education. I now have my master's degree. My son is autistic. He's in a program right now. He's three years old, but he will be at the deadline for December 1st. He will be four years old in July. So that would throw him into the TK 24, which he will not qualify because he's, he needs more assistance than that. So that puts him into a K through five, which he's not actually eligible for kindergarten for two more years, which makes absolutely no sense to me. He doesn't fit into the demographic that's going to be in those classrooms. He's going to be disruptive. And then on top of that, if you put him in the K through five special education class, he's going to be in there with people that are in, or sorry, students that are in puberty. They're going through a lot different things. Right now, the current situation, he wasn't talking, he wasn't walking, he wasn't doing normal things that kids were. He was introverted. At this point, he's talking, he's walking, he's getting through the day and actually being able to communicate and not being so frustrated. The tantrums have come less and less. At this point, from winter break on, he's, he regressed during winter break because he was out of this program. He came back into this program, and he's flourishing. Please do not take this away from him. He needs this. Those four-year-olds cannot be in those older classes. This is just not, it's not okay. Please do something.
My name is Miroslava Artiaga, and I'm here once again to talk to the board in regards to the changes that the ECE program is facing. Once again, the ECE program is being shrunk. A lot of classes are being closed. A lot of, the remaining CDCs will be closed a year in advance of what it was planned. And this year, another 25 teachers, ECE teachers, will receive pink slips. Again, I just want to remind everybody that for the past years, the ECE teachers have suffered, suffered in a sense, they've been accessed, they've been transferred, and they've been receiving pink slips. There's a lot of teachers who are still waiting to be recalled. But now, this proposal adds another 25 ECE teachers to the layoff list. I don't think that's fair for anybody. I don't think that's fair for children, for families, and for the teachers. Look at this proposal, read it carefully, and think, is this really necessary? Not only students will suffer, but families and teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kimberly. I am a parent of three autistic children. My oldest being 13. He has gone through early childhood special education. He started out completely nonverbal, very aggressive. He's 13 now, and he is looking into going into coding and having a life and becoming a prosperous adult and making those decisions. My four-year-old is nonverbal, and they are talking about putting him in a TK4 program. He won't qualify. He absolutely cannot go into that program. And my almost three-year-old daughter is about to go into this program. It is so important for them to get these services. Currently, we are doing 90 hours of services just to help them get to where they need to be as adults. The Early Childhood Special Education Program does so much for these kids in the long run. So please think about that when you make these decisions.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public speakers. I think we have, we're talking about the general second interim financial report, and then we have this specific issue about ECE and ECSE, which is obviously a very important issue, which everybody feels and cares about very much tonight. So I would ask the superintendent, could you have staff members come up that could speak to the board, and we could kind of address some of these issues and maybe switch off for, if you have a couple people to bring up?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Evans. I'd like to invite our executive director of special education, Sarah Ott, and the director of early childhood, Stephanie Siminski, to talk about this specific topic. As you said, this is a very broad topic that Dr. Ottinger and Ms. Thiede just presented on going qualified for second interim and the PKS, but specifically around special education, early childhood, and early childhood adjustments and changes. I'd like our two experts leading this work to be able to talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to, so as was stated and agreed, this is something that we're just rolling out, and so there are a lot of questions that we're still answering. One of the things that's brought up is that Acacia was able to clarify there will be no layoffs to the ECSE teachers. The separate setting classrooms, that's been talked about, there are the same amount planned for next year of separate setting classrooms that we have currently this year. I think we have about 35 classrooms, and there'll be that many classrooms next year. We are required by law to provide the separate setting service that is on the IEP. So we are ensuring that we will provide what the IEP states. We would never take a student that an IEP says needs a separate classroom and unilaterally place them at a district level into a general ed classroom. That is up to an IEP team. And as we know in our K-12 model, we're moving towards more inclusion, and we want to provide opportunities for more inclusion. And that is what this program will provide. However, that's up to the IEP team to see if students are ready to be in that inclusion and be part of that opportunity.
I just first want to paint the picture. Four years ago, we were at the same place when we started pre-K for all. And one of the goals that we had as a district and as a department was to break down that silo and increase access for our youngest learners. And so over the last four years, we have built a model of continuous improvement. And one of the Assembly Blue Ribbon Commission's recommendations and under the governor's master plan was to align our resources, maximize our expertise, and formulate robust data through interdepartment resources and relationships. And that's to align to the TK12 system. And so one of the ways that we focused on that was to build a continuum of services through the XC special, special day class, the part-day blended preschool program, and the four-year-old TK program. And one of the things that Sarah and I were committed to was to ensure that our inclusive model and that our students with disabilities were served. And one of the things that we just did was go through 123 students with disabilities that are currently three-year-olds in our program, and to ensure that they all have a place at their neighborhood school. So together that we are, we are focusing on the student needs, building a continuum at their school sites, continuing collaboration with the school principals to ensure that that articulation and that vertical continuum can happen within our schools.
Let's have some order placed, because we were quiet while everyone's speaking. I just want to check with, in terms of, I mean, you made very clear that if there are special K, you're talking about moving towards inclusion, but that there will always, always be exceptions to that. And you're talking about there are going to be opportunities for inclusion and collaboration with teachers in terms of these blended classrooms and so forth. And obviously, you're trying, I imagine you're trying to balance out, you know, what is the most efficient way to get the best possible education? And yet, balancing that against the concern of being at the nearest neighborhood school, right? So there is some give and take or sacrifice in terms of this program, right? And how do we provide the best possible education when we also have this other goal of having kids at the neighborhood school? So could you talk about how you're sort of balancing out these two issues?
So it speaks to what Stephanie just spoke to. We took this, the selected locations were based on children who were currently enrolled and will matriculate into the, into the next year's setting. Just for clarification, right now, not all children served in some of these settings attend their neighborhood schools. Many of them don't. Many of the children, some of the parents spoke about it, ride buses and attend a school outside of their neighborhood. So our intention is to ensure that we have the services where they're needed. There still will be some travel. And so, but that is the current situation.
Okay. Please be respectful. Okay. Board members, any questions or comments on this particular issue?
I think that there's a misunderstanding about what it is to have special education in the IEPs and so forth, but it says individualized educational plan. And I think we on this dais understand that. I personally have been an advocate for really pushing for the least restrictive environment. And I shared with the superintendent today, at one of our middle schools, they were doing the very same lesson, but separated, and they had enough staff. Why couldn't they be in the same classrooms, et cetera? But if the IEP says that they are to be in that restricted environment, then we honor that. I think as a district, as a team, it's our opportunity to really look at all the options and just stretch, because each child has unique needs. And we are required, are you okay, Kevin?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Each child is, I usually have cough drops to pass around like that from people who are coughing. I'm going to give you one. Okay. Each team, each IEP team, needs to look at each child and decide what's in the best interest for that particular child, recognizing that the law does say the least restrictive environment for that child. Maybe the child needs to be pushed, but we have to do it as a team. And that's just the law. So we want to follow it because in the end, the children will benefit, the greater society will benefit from it. And I just hope we always keep that thought in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barrera.
So I think, as you identified, President Evans and Superintendent Martin, we're talking about a few things that I'm not sure are connected tonight, and I think that's part of just the, how this process came about. So the first thing that we're doing is we're talking about identifying our budget solutions. I think Mr. Ottinger was very clear that in order for us to move forward... I think Mr. Ottinger was very clear that in order for us to move forward with a budget that meets the needs of our students, we do need to see some changes in the state, in the final state budget adoption from what we saw in the governor's proposal. And primarily, we can't just simply take 40% of the Prop 98 money and put it into pots of, you know, competitive one-time grants that districts can't budget for. So we're at a point in time right now that whatever the intention of those programs are in the governor's budget, and again, I don't know that anybody would disagree with the goal of recruiting and retaining teachers, with the goal of supporting high-need schools, with community schools, but by simply taking that amount of money and putting it into one-time restricted funds, it means that we can't, and no district can plan for that right now as we're going forward with our budget adoption, and that creates holes. And so, the action that we're taking tonight, we fully intend, as we always do, to balance our budget by the end of June, but we do need to see some shifts back in the final state budget adoption away from these sort of special programs and back towards core operating expenses that districts rely on. But that's the process that we're going through right now. I think the, this conversation about what's happening with our early childhood special education sites is a, I don't see where the action we're taking tonight in improving our budget, given that Acacia's clarified that there are no cuts in positions from early childhood special education positions and certainly no, no layoff notices. I don't believe we're taking any final action in what this plan is about. And I heard, you know, Sarah talk about, we have a lot of unanswered questions. We clearly have a lot of communication that needs to be happening with the community, both the parents and the stakeholders, before we just simply say we've got a finished product. And we've got a process that's been underway with a committee to talk about where collectively we want to move in our vision for early childhood special education that balances the needs, as Dr. Whiters Payne talked about, for standalone centers where the needs of kids require that, but where we've got the opportunity to move forward with inclusion, where we're able to do that. But that is a work in progress that needs to happen with the full communication of our stakeholders. And so I don't believe that in any way we are taking an action tonight on our budget that creates a final plan for what's going to happen with our early childhood special education. And I fully understand why there's confusion in that, but, but I don't, you know, I certainly am not voting tonight to approve the budget and as part of that vote, voting on some final plan on early childhood special education. You know, I want to see a plan that comes forward to us over the next couple of months that is the product of complete collaboration. So the question that I really do have that is part of the action that we're taking tonight is the reduction in the 29 FTEs for early childhood education separate from the early childhood special educators. So I'm just, can we be clear about why, why we're reducing by 29 FTEs early childhood educator positions?
So the early childhood education PKS that is there for vote tonight is based on the changes that we're making to allow that, let me start all over again. The state changed the enrollment age for TK. So in beginning 7/1 of 2019, we were allowed to commingle and enroll four-year-olds into our TK plan, into our TK slots. Why that's important for us is that we have a severe, a significant investment in early learning. And for us to be able to provide TK opportunities when in previous years, the only option was for preschool, we jumped at the opportunity to provide TK to our earliest learners. And so that's the most significant change. In a place where four-year-olds were enrolling in preschool, they will be enrolling in TK programs. So there will be, there will be less opportunities for our, for the preschool.
And so-
For the preschool credentials.
Please, please be polite.
And so the intention by expanding TK opportunities is not to reduce the number of preschool slots available to our students.
Okay, please, please let her answer-
I'm going to let Stephanie address this.
Just a second, Ms. Thiede. Please, I'm going to ask the audience, we're having, we had a public comment period and now we're having questions and answers from the board. This is a public meeting conducted in front of the public, so you see exactly what we're doing, but we need to be able to hear the answers from our staff. So please, thank you. Please be quiet while the people are speaking. That is the reason we allow the public to sit here and observe the meeting. Go ahead.
The sites that we're using are the same sites that we currently have preschool, preschools at, except with the exception of three sites because they don't offer TK programs or they're a magnet or 100% choice school. And the San Diego Unified School District has not reduced the contract with the state of California, so we will still have the same existing slots that we, that we have now. However, we're more purposefully planning for where students need to enroll, where there are access, instead of having empty classrooms with two students in it or zero students in it, where we can grow and we can be purposeful in what those students need and more tailored to our community.
So you can say that there will, there will be the same number of slots in San Diego High School District for these students as there are currently, or more?
Correct. And we're just going to be more purposeful where we place the slots where there's need.
Right.
Isn't there an issue with the credentials? Let's just talk about it.
Because we were talking, and I think the question has to do with the transition from, from early childhood education to TK and the credentials that are required-
There's a different credential.
So that sometimes we have to have people with different credentials, not, not fewer people, but we need the right credentials. Is that right?
Because pre-K is not a regular, I mean, explain the difference. When it's a-
Preschool is a different credential than TK.
And, and some of the ones that were in preschool, from what you said, are being moved into TK.
There, there's some folks who have bumping rights between credential areas.
I didn't, I was talking about the staff, I was talking about the students that-
Yes.
The previous, they would have been in preschool-
Correct.
And now are in TK, but they're in a program that requires a different credential.
Correct.
But there's still the slots for all of them.
Yes.
Whether it's preschool or TK.
Yes.
Also, isn't the issue that you're trying to get these folks into a program if they don't have the proper credential so that they can get it? Isn't there some discussion about that?
So one of the options that we've been pursuing for the past couple of years is providing opportunities for our ECE teachers to become credentialed teachers. One of the things that we did, we put out a survey to all of our impacted staff and asked them if they're interested. We are planning for meetings with those individuals who indicated even an interest, not even that they're sure, but just an interest, so that we can provide them with information, opportunity. Stephanie has discovered some local scholarship opportunities. We have other existing scholarship opportunities for individuals. And that's what I was referring to up here, where we have helped people in the past and currently have people enrolled in internship programs that allow them to become a credentialed teacher. So our intention with this process, because layoffs are hard, and I'm the first person that will sit here and say, I don't want to do them. And-
Please, please.
And so, rather than the normal process that would be, we issue the notices, we say to people, I'm sorry, we'll try to get you another option, we'll call you when somebody else resigns or leaves. What we want to do is provide opportunities for people to find something else in the district so that they can stay with us. It's not ideal.
Please be quiet. I'm going to have to ask if the people are going to speak out, they're not going to be able to stay in the room, okay?
It's not ideal and it's not perfect, but it gives us an opportunity to keep people who love the work, who love working in their schools and in their communities, the opportunity to do that. We referred to our Zoom conferences and our in-person Zoom meeting that we had last week where we heard from people who are interested in taking advantage of these opportunities. They're sad that things are changed, change is difficult, but we've talked to them about several different opportunities that we are going to be providing. And people aren't required to participate in them, but our intention, our support that we're providing, we think is essential for individuals. It's not anything that we're required to do, but we feel like it's necessary, it's important, and it's intended to be a supportive opportunity for individuals.
Well, and I think to summarize what Mr. Barrera was saying is that, first of all, there are no position eliminations or layoffs in early childhood special education. So that program is evolving and being worked out and needs to develop more with the participation of everybody. And then the ECE issue is related to the fact that there, there's a change in the credentials because some of the same students who had previously been in preschool are not going to be there anymore because they're going to be in a TK class for which the ECE teachers are not credentialed to teach. And, and then, as you mentioned, the idea is to see if we can still have those teachers within the district provide additional training and providing other jobs on the people level. And, and then the idea we talked about before was in terms of the programs, you're trying to balance out getting the best possible program and integration of general ed and special ed and a certain number of sites that we can't, we can't offer everywhere, but trying to balance out those two factors of being close to home and also offering a good educational program.
So I would ask the maker of the motion on this item, if we could just add just an amendment, which would be that we ask the superintendent to come back to us in a timely manner, having fully engaged the stakeholders in the early childhood special education program, to- to come back to us with a clear plan that meets the needs of students in these different circumstances, which I hear is the intention of, you know, of Sarah and which I know is the goal of the, of the stakeholders. So just so that, again, we're crystal clear that that plan needs to continue to be developed in collaboration with the stakeholders. And it feels like there should be a lot of common ground that we can find with that.
And, and if I could just add on another line to that in terms of what's going on with early childhood special education, even though it's been mentioned what's happening, that we would at that time also have an update on what is happening with the teachers in ECE, who can, how successful are they being transitioned into other, other positions or further training? So, so we have the amendment-
I concur with those modifications and because we kept hearing about clarity and so forth, I concur with that.
Okay, so we have the motion, the second, and we have it amended. That is in relation to, no, we have one motion, I mean, on, on the entire matter of the second interim report. They're not being voted on separately. So, so what I was going to do, and then you can tell me to trustee Beiser, is to, if we could go back to the, the general issue of the budget now and thank you for filling us in on this particular detail. Is that what it's related to, Mr. Beiser?
Yeah, I'd like to just briefly speak to the motion. You know, what, what we're really voting for is a very difficult budget with $81 million in solutions. And to the extent that the superintendent is able to bring forward a balanced budget with minimal, minimal cost in terms of PKS, I think is, is very, very impressive. I remember the, over the years, we've had to solve for hundreds of million, $100 million, $80 million, $90 million, $120 million. And this is, this, this is not an easy thing to do. You cannot painlessly balance a budget and find $80 million in solutions. But I believe that this budget proposal that provides for a balanced budget, given our finite resources, has been done with a lot of care to minimize the impact to the schools, the sites, and the students. Now, I believe that this early childhood education issue is a separate, very important issue that I'm, I'm grateful for trustee Barrera asking for us to look at this issue and have the superintendent come back at a later time, because I believe that while they're connected, I believe that they're actually in some ways separate. Given the fact, given the fact that there's been clarification that no early childhood education, special education teachers are going to be released at all. And releasing any special education teacher with our current situation, I don't think is prudent. But one thing that I do want a bit of clarity about is that we all have to realize and recognize what's going on in our national economy and the global economy right now. Governor Brown set aside a rainy day fund, knowing the realities that economic cycles take. That rainy day fund has billions and billions of dollars in it right now as we speak. And what we are seeing and realizing through the, the oil war between Saudi Arabia and Russia and the impacts that's having on the global economy, the concerns and fears, some founded, some unfounded, about the coronavirus and its impact on the global economy, and the realization that we may be headed into a global recession. So this budget challenge, we, we must continue to find budget solutions that allow us to continue to provide quality education for students with the understanding that in the future, we don't know what kind of economy or funding we're going to be receiving at the state. So we've got to make sure that we're doing everything we can to continue to balance our budget. So while I will be voting in favor of the budget, because that's the responsible thing we have to do as grownups, we also have to make sure that we are addressing the specific concerns that are being raised tonight about providing for preschool students and TK students. And there are some unique things that I believe that have been presented tonight, and that's the reality, that the state changed the enrollment age July 1st, 2019. And that, I think, is something that's affecting some of the things that are going on. But I think, I think that we are all unanimous in understanding the reality that if we're going to have large programmatic changes, we need to make sure that we're doing it in consultation with all of the stakeholders, parents, educators, teachers, and that- and that as a teacher myself, we are having the same conversations in the Sweetwater School District where they're getting rid of every single librarian, and they're making some very, very painful decisions right now with their, with their budget. Lots of layoffs in Sweetwater. Sometimes when we get together and we talk about programmatic changes, sometimes we're able to agree on the, on the proper path forward. But we have to also acknowledge the reality that you cannot always have everybody agree on everything. And sometimes we have to make very difficult decisions. So with that, I, I know that the budget is, is a very difficult decision. And I understand that not everything that happens with early, early childhood education is going to be well-received with roguous applause. Sometimes there may be changes made that people disagree about. And we have to figure out what's best for our district, our students, and what we can do within the means, the finite resources that we have. But I really, really hope that we can do whatever we can collectively to impress upon the people that claim to represent our interests in Sacramento, the people that claim to prioritize public education, that they will prove their commitment with a may revise that puts students first. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Whiters Payne. Okay. Okay, no comments from the public, please.
We, we've been meeting with-
We, we've been meeting with the Assemblywoman, Dr. Shirley Weber. We've met with Todd Gloria's staff. We have a couple of other meetings, I think, on the schedule. And we've been making known the issues that school districts, not just San Diego, but all school districts are experiencing in terms of the pension costs, the special education needs. And we have a list of things. The 2.31% rather than the 3.0. So, we've been making known to Sacramento, and we have challenged them to use some of the rainy day funds to help out, to make this a better process. I think it's very frustrating that we have to give out notices on March 15th, not knowing exactly what kind of funds we're going to have for the next year, because with the May revise, we'll get some different numbers, and so, we're kind of like out there blindly trying to decide, well, will they do this or won't they do this, and putting together a budget. So, it's my expectation and my hope that we won't have to go through in May with any of these, but for right now, and because we don't know, we have to take this step. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? I mean, I think along with what Dr. Whiters Payne was saying, is this hap...
Just my, my comment, I think everything has been said.
Okay. Thank you. This is, it's one point in time, and we will continue to work on this coming months. I do want to thank the people who've come here and talked about the importance of these programs to their children and to their students and to their daughters and sons. But I also want to point out and appreciate the work that Ms. Thiede has been doing. In the past, we have had massive layoffs across the district, and one of the rules of thumb when school districts have done layoffs is that if you're going to eliminate 500 positions, you have to give about 1,500 or 2,000 layoff notices because you don't know exactly where everybody's going to end up, which just causes great churn and difficulty across the district. And what we have here is the exact opposite in terms of when we have 135 positions eliminated, that would normally be four or 500 layoff notices. Instead of that, we have 55 layoff notices because we've carefully looked at who's going to retire, who, who might move, all these other different factors that would reduce the, reduce the number of layoffs. We do have to make these small adjustments every year because we are, we do have approximately 1,000 fewer students every year, and that means the state does not give us the money to fund those, the students, the teachers, excuse me, for those 1,000 students. And, and we're talking a lot about in general about the, the state and the budget and so forth. I just have one quick question is, why is, as the pension amount is going up on the stirs from next year, from this year to next year, why does it go down a little bit in the following year?
There was, in the last, in the last budget, there was a two-year, there was a two-year support built in. So, in last year's enacted budget, they built in two years of support, whereas we were hoping to see additional and continued support, as in, this has been a key aspect that is plaguing all school districts. So, that's why you're seeing that, that year-over-year adjustment, because last year's enacted budget contemplated from the state, two years, two years of support.
Okay. And this is an example of where the state needs to step in. Some people don't realize that we do not manage our pension system, that it's, it's entirely a state system. And if you look at the Teachers Retirement Fund, the employer contribution from several years ago in 2013 to today, if you see on the other side of the chart on what slide? Is this slide seven? You can see there, seven, that it's actually, in these, in these seven years, there is a 225% increase to the district in the pension cost. You know, when we're talking about cost of living of 2% or 3%, it's 225% over about seven years. On the other employees who are not certificated, the Calpers, it's about 277% increase. So, you can see, this is making a huge difference, and this is a classic example of where the state should step in with, not with the regular Prop 98 funds to provide some relief on this particular, in this particular area. And so, anyway, I just wanted to make that, that one point, and we obviously need to keep working on the longer-term solution so we're not arguing over nickels and dimes about how to fund public education in California in the next decade. So, if there are no further comments, please vote on the approval of the second interim report and PKS. Okay, and that passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Thiede and Mr. Abell.
Thank you. Move approval on H2 and H3. Dr. Evans, move approval on H2 and H3.
Okay. Moving approval of item H, this is an information item, actually, so we're just talking about, I'm not sure why we're not taking action on these. Can anyone tell me why we're not taking action on these right-of-way issues? Do you know, superintendent, or Ms. Green?
Why are these simple items?
Items H2 and H3 are right-of-way issues, which we normally vote on, and they're listed as information items. Ms. Stoltz, do you know why that is?
I believe Mr. Dolgorov is coming down.
Mr. Dolgorov, okay. He's in the crowd.
Dr. Evans is asking about H3 and H4, which is...
H2 and H3.
These should be action items. Yeah.
I'll second her motion to move item H2 and H3.
This is an action item. Okay. Okay, H2 and H3, no further comments. Please vote on those two items. Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Dolgorov. And now, we move to the superintendent's consent agenda, item 12, that was polled for a speaker, I believe. Let me see here.
Yes, we have one speaker on I-12. It's Francine Maxwell.
Okay, Francine Maxwell, I-12. You have up to three minutes.
Wonderful. Francine Maxwell, community member of District E. I-12, once again, is special ed due process. Again, the district continues to neglect how properly to run a special ed department as a whole. This month, you have spent $417,000. Over various months, due process, you've added to the 202,000. You shielded in the month of November with over $400,000 you had to dish out. October, for the same due process errors, means in the past three months, you have spent a million dollars. Let's think about what a million dollars would have done to the classrooms, to the teachers, to the staff, of the parents, not to mention the disservice, the disservice that continually occurs to these students. Their needs are not being met. You continue to show the lack of concern with students with disabilities in this district. You should be ashamed of yourself. Just to continue to prove my previous statement, because of your inability to run a department, yet alone a school district, you have spent money yet to fix your errors. You know what you're not doing for the students. You continually do it every month. You continually pay the money out. That just doesn't make any sense as a taxpayer to me. When you, when you're going to figure it out, I'm not sure, but Dr. Evans wrote an article in the Voice of San Diego, and he illegally sent it to every employee in this district. The grand jury sent the district information two years ago about using all staff emails from the Board of Trustees that had nothing to do with the school district business. But once again, John Lee Evans doesn't think the rules apply to him, especially now that he's the board trustee president. The citizens of San Diego are tired. Your cries for more money are falling on deaf ears. When parents hear how much money you continually spend on due process, and it does not have to be that way, every month, you do not have to not treat our children correctly. Your mismanagement of monies continue every year, and the district is in the red. The board needs to seriously point the finger at yourselves. You continually get us in trouble, for the least of them. Remember what the Bible says, "To much is given, much is required." You have all been given a great charge, and it's required of you to think of the least then. The least then are the babies and the seniors. So, you don't have anything to do with seniors, but our special ed cost, our due process cost, why aren't you paying attention? Why aren't you outraged? Why don't you call the two girls back up here and have a conversation? Why aren't the special ed people being trained to give the students exactly what they need? A million dollars? Think about it. What could we do with a million dollars if all our children were treated right the first time?
Okay, thank you. And we will now, is there a motion on item I-12?
By I-12.
Okay. Second by Dr. McQuarrie. Okay, please vote on I-12. Okay, that passes 5-0. We now go to public testimony on items not on the agenda. Then we have, how many speakers do we have?
Yes, we have two speakers. If Citizen is here and Sadi Kruhup.
Sadi Kruhup. So, Citizen or Sadi Kruhup, if either of you are here, you can come forward to speak. It does not look like they are here, in which case, we will adjourn this meeting. The next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May 24th. Excuse me. The next meeting will be March 17th, 2020, at Lincoln High School, the special joint meeting with the San Diego Community College District. And then, the regular meeting will be on March 24th. Meeting is adjourned.